401, and we can call the Special Meeting of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission to Order. Our agenda is to, for the afternoon, is to talk about the comprehensive plan update. Are there any additional items that we need to add to the agenda for today?
We have a motion to approve the agenda.
So move, Tros.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Motion carried. With that, I will turn it over to Nick and Brian. Thank you for joining us again.
Hopefully, everybody had a chance to kind of work through some of the attachments and, and I think, Virginia, you referred to it as your homework last time. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to kind of go through the, the purpose and, and the intent, and then start to look at the goals and the policies and in light of all the information that was gleaned from those three task force meetings, what adjustments, what areas, what additions, what subtractions should we be making to the statements that are in these, these areas of the plan currently. So if you want, I can kind of walk us through the doc and then I'll just kind of ask you if you've got thoughts, ideas, and we'll just kind of work through. How does that sound? Okay? Okay.
Sounds good.
Alrighty, great. So the purpose and the intent at the beginning, there's a page that gives you a background. Nick and I will have to update that, making reference to the new chapter in the code. Comp plans are now defined separately in a separate section of the Iowa code. And so we'll leave a lot of the text, but we've got to make reference to some of the, or to the appropriate section to the code so that we're, we're cross-reference there in terms of, of making sure that we've satisfied those requirements. So that page, we'll do a little bit of rewriting on. Did anybody have any questions on that page at all, once you kind of look through it, everybody kind of understand what the intent is and what the purpose is? Again, you probably see this document most often referred to in your staff reports.
Which page? This is Sue Flynn. Which page are you referring to? I just joined the call. I apologize.
No, that's okay. We'll just write on the first page, Sue.
On implementation?
Under purpose and intent, I think.
Where?
Here, let me.
It's toward the back. It's toward the back in what the heck.
Yeah.
Looks like page seven of the PDF packet.
Okay, so we're starting on page seven. Okay.
Hey. Did anybody, again, back to the conversation, did anybody have any comments about the purpose and intent at all? Any, any questions? Any concerns?
I don't have any.
So let's go ahead and flip the page. This should be the next page, hopefully, in your packet. Let me just pull it up on my screen here so that I've got it in front of me as well. This should start with literally a list of definitions that help describe the plan. The first, very first word says general, that this should be a general plan. I suppose that's page number eight in your packet, then? Is that about right?
Yeah, that's about right.
Okay.
It says page two on the lower right of our packet, but it's the eighth page back.
Yeah, and what, what the page numbers that you see in the lower right-hand corner are the correct page numbers for that copy of the comp plan that you have. So you can follow either place, really. We just tried to pull the pages out for you so that you didn't have to dig through eighty pages or whatever it is. So, so, right, it's numbered as page number two on the bottom. Again, it is within your packet. So as you look through this, I'm going to walk you through this. It's intended to be a general plan. Again, that's the definition. What we did last time was we did a tiered or prioritized growth to a degree. And so what we did was we looked at areas of the community that were serviced by primarily sanitary sewer and street. And those were closest in then to the built area of the community. Again, Waterloo having large tracts of of open or ag or undeveloped ground. What we did was, knowing that the expense to develop that would be very, very large. And so what we did was, we figured, okay, what's the most logical growth pattern? So what we did was, we just created a scoring system and tiered everything, meaning we layered it or prioritized it. So is that kind of everybody's want? If we do the same kind of thing, it's kind of the logical way to do it, especially in a larger community. Where the city extends services is a lot of times the direction they're headed in terms of growth. Make sense?
It does.
Okay, so this, this plan is going to be a locally directed plan. When we did the plan in 2003, there wasn't a state section in the code. There now is, as of 2010. That, I think, if you recall, was born out of the floods and the tornado of '08. It became part of the code in 2010. And so there will be a little bit of state guidance. You've seen it in the handouts where they tell us we have to be consistent with the ten SMART planning principles and the thirteen guidelines. That's it. There's no more state oversight. We don't submit it anywhere. They don't review it. They don't grade it. They don't score it. They don't approve it. So for the most part, it's a local plan. As long as we stay consistent with the code, we're okay. Balanced, obviously. The, the growth in the community, what you read and what you heard, if you look through those task force sheets, was that, in fact, growth needed to be balanced. And by balanced, I mean geographically, so not just on the edges, but also redevelop downtown. And so that balance comment actually fits. We probably wish, would just enhance that a little bit to make mention of the redevelopment and, and much redevelopment has been done downtown since that 2003 plan was put in place. Again, not necessarily because of the plan, but just since then, with the Riverfront Renaissance and, and all the projects going on here. So that is something that I think people want to see continue moving forward. Questions or comments about that? Okay, public input friendly. Again, we have to do certain things. As you all know too well, you don't need me telling you that we've got to do certain things that invite public input as required perhaps by code or by city ordinance or by city policy like this plan. But again, we'll, we'll go through and update that bullet and work through some of those existing plans. Currently, the city is doing a number of things in addition to this plan. The city is working on a strategic plan at the same time. There is a plan that is being worked on. I think John Deere is, is working through some of, of, of a planning effort for the city. Likewise, there's a housing needs assessment that's being worked on. And so we'll update those plans that were referenced, those that are there, the Millennium Plan and that Riverfront Renaissance, those were being done at the time we did the plan, the comp plan last time. So we'll, we'll make reference to the new efforts that are being, that are going on. Again, right now, you're doing a lot of implementation of that Riverfront Renaissance plan. Accepting of growth and then cognizant of, of other area plans. Again, there was mention of the Rath Brownfields Plan and the Millennium Plan. We're going to update that list of, of plans to include things such as the the ones I mentioned, plus the Walnut Neighborhood, just all the activities, the redevelopment of the school sites in the community. And so we'll, we'll do some discussion. We'll add some text that talks about some of the, the projects that are going on, in addition to those that are going on along the edge of the community. Again, we'll be, we'll make sure we're aware of, of those existing plans. We want to make sure, obviously, that we're sensitive to the needs of the community. This is a place in the document that we should make discussion or make some comment or, or phrase about the diversity of the community and our want to be inclusive in the planning process and making sure that we're giving people an opportunity to participate in the process. Again, just enhancing that so that we, we make sure that, that we cover the fact that the community is very diverse when you compare to those in our region, as well as even in the state of Iowa, and that the, the city seeks to, to make sure that their processes are inclusive. So we would enhance that a little bit. The environmentally sound, just a few other notes that I had made is that a few activities that have really taken to light since your last plan was done, or the current plan, I guess it should be called. Watershed planning, the city is participating in, in watershed planning at a very large regional level. We should make mention of that. Stormwater management is obviously been going on a lot, really, since the 2008 floods with not only the buyouts of, of flood-impacted structures. I think Eric, you worked on that project. There were some very sizable pump stations that were built. There are some under construction. There have been some built by the bridge, but throughout the community that deal with stormwater management. And then this would be a place, under this section, to mention climate change, if that's something that we wanted to get included in the document. That we need to be aware of the impacts of, of the things we do and the potential impact that it may have on climate change.
Um, there are, there are a few council members that might want that language about climate change to be included.
Okay. All right. There, the next phrase is there at the bottom, then, supportive of some predictability. It doesn't mean that the answer always has to go my way, right? It just means the process runs predictably. That you get on the, you fill out an application, you get on the agenda. The matters taken out by the Planning Commission or matters are taken out by the Board of Adjustment, Planning Commission, and City Council. The staff has a role with the tech committee, but that that process and procedure is, in fact, predictable. It doesn't necessarily mean that the outcome is always predictable or that it goes my way as the applicant all the time. It just means that the process is predictable. It's transparent, it's open, and it's very deliberate. Those would be some other terms that we would include there. Quality of life, this was covered. Your task force actually did work on this. We, we did not only community collaboration, but we did discuss with them what makes the community unique. There were handouts, there were discussions that we had, that Nick and I had with that task force. And we would want to build this up a little bit here to make mention, again, in addition to what you see there. But we want to make mention, again, of the community's diversity. We've got a lot of what are known as locational advantages. We're on a highway. We're, we're a hub in the middle of a number of different highway systems. We're very proximate to not only bigger metro areas, you know, we're probably within four hours, five hours of Kansas City, Chicago, Minneapolis, St. Louis. And so we've got some of those, those proximity benefits. We've got a rich history as a community. That was one of the things, again, that your task force brought out. We have very strong cultural institutions and events that happen in the community. Again, there's a spot for those maybe to be enhanced. And then really, the community working towards making itself be more walkable, more bikeable, so that we're open to more modes of transportation. And so we would, we would see beefing that up a little bit. That sort of makes sense? All right, the next, the next page, I guess it's three on the printed page, but it's probably about number, number nine in your packet or towards the back is that we'd want to make sure that we're not only protective of the scenic and the historic, but also the cultural resources. So we would see that being beefed up as well, too. The community's got a number of cultural resources. And so we, we just want to call those out and make sure that we're protective of those cultural resources. You know, the most recent one probably being the Walnut Neighborhood and the efforts that are being made in that Walnut Neighborhood, just not, not only is it historic, but it's also very cultural. And so we'd want to call out some of those things. Regional collaboration, competition, or I'm, rather than competition, that came up a number of times with the task force. If you went back and looked at any of those notes, you will see repeatedly that there were comments made about, you know, we want to see the community reach out. We want to see the community make its efforts to work with other communities around it, not necessarily just cities, but also the county. There are a whole bunch of different arrangements and collaborative efforts that were listed in those sheets that they came up with and, and the group really wanted to see that continue. And quite honestly, I suspect the Planning Commission would like to see that continue as well, too. Again, with the cost of things, sometimes it's just more affordable, cost-effective, and efficient if we work with other jurisdictions to do things. Again, there was some mention about a third-party facilitator. That could be something that our agency is involved in. That seems to be a role that we get involved with quite a bit because we are a multi-governmental entity that has about sixty-one members, so fifty-five cities and six counties. And so it seems like when there's a need for an agency or an entity to kind of jump into the middle of the conversation, sometimes that's us. And so sometimes it's not always the most comfortable conversation, but it is something that, that the community had indicated that they'd like to see happen as well. Again, I think inclusion of, of, there are just so many different nonprofit organizations and, and social entities, social organizations, not-for-profits in the community, that we want to make sure that we're including them in the process as well, too. They, after all, probably have a number of, of individual plans as well. And so we want to make sure that, that we're continuing to communicate with those, those agencies as well, too, that are in the community, that serve the public, those, those entities that would be in addition to the city itself. Sound urban design. What that means really is making things fit, not only aesthetically, but based on the, the physiological or the geographic amenities that are there. That means topography, that means soils, that means whether or not it's wooded. It means using things like green design and just being more environmentally sensitive of when those things can be integrated into the process. Always making sure that we're cognizant of the fact that transportation and land use are, are kind of chicken and egg. They are inextricably tied. So you can probably make a list on your, on your sheet there of times when the transportation infrastructure came first and then came the development. Conversely, you can probably come up when the land use changed, thus affecting the transportation needs. We've got several of those going on right now. Just drive out by the new amusement park, the new facility out there, and and you'll see the example of where a couple of land uses are going to affect the transportation network. And so likewise, you can say the, the same thing as the four-lane road developed through the community and as land use has changed around the four lanes. Was there a question?
Yeah, this is Eric. Eric Do Not. My question was back a little earlier on the page where you were talking about Walnut, the development of Walnut Neighborhood. Some other, some others to consider would be along the same lines as the development, the Walnut Neighborhood would be about the area where the Civil Rights Trail goes through in the city, because that has been a real a thing that the Waterloo Commission for Human Rights has been talking about, advancing and supporting and just raising awareness for. That that's been around some different sites that are part of African-American history as connected through Waterloo. And then, of course, any other sites that would be related to other racial or minority groups or ethnic groups.
All right. The, the last bullet there is, is, we always want to make sure that wherever the community develops, whether it's infill right downtown, or whether it's on the edge, that the development doesn't outrun the utilities and the services that are necessary for that particular use. So that we make sure that, and your staff does a really good job at this. You see that as part of your staff reports as development or requests come forward. All of that information is, again, presented in your staff reports. The connectivity to the sewer, the water, those kinds of things, very important. And we, we obviously need to continue to be vigilant and, and make sure that we are, in fact, as we're growing, that we're making sure that we've got enough services to take care of those things. And it's not always just the infrastructure piece. It can also be social services. It could be police and fire. It could be parks. It could be schools. It could be all of those kinds of things. So I know you'll be sensitive to those things, but again, we're just trying to make sure that growth occurs concurrently or at the same time or simultaneously with extension or provision of those, those services that are necessary. So a few other notes that we had made at the bottom of our sheets was, didn't know if we wanted to make mention of a few other things, that the ag, agricultural protection, preservations, certainly climate change. We talked about that a little bit. Again, we could integrate in some bullets for you to take a look at. Promoting healthy and active lifestyles. That is something that really is become popular, if any of you are familiar with the Blue Zones and the Blue Zones process and, and just being healthier community, the bike trails, the walking, the, you know, just getting outside, being able to enjoy the fresh air, but just those active or healthy lifestyles. One of the comments then that was made, too, in our task force meetings was relating to then the marketing and imaging of the city that we've always got to be cognizant in Waterloo of, of our image and, and our market in terms of how people portray us and, and that maybe, you know, some effort needs to be, continue to be made. I know there have been a lot of strides made, but to continue to push our best foot forward. Again. The, and again, then, the only other note that I had written down at the bottom then was making sure that growth, those kinds of things, land use in particular, is really community development focused. You're saying, well, you know, what does, what does, what does that mean? What it means is it means beyond just economic development, which, which a lot of people equate to just jobs and/or tax base, that we go beyond that and we look at the whole of the community. Yes, economic development is one piece, but that we make sure that it fits in with the rest of, of the city's plans, as it fits in with the neighborhood, as it fits in with the fiscal abilities of the community to support the use, all those kinds of things. It means being more comprehensive. So looking at things community-wide, rather than maybe just through the lens of, of how many jobs is this going to generate or how much tax base. Those are important, but we're just saying, you know, add a few more factors to the conversation. I'm sure you do. Anything beyond that in the purpose? Otherwise, we can take a look at, and this would be where we get to then, the implementation page. So if you want to kind of shuffle your, your documents a little bit there, I'm looking at the land use goals is where I'm starting. It's, it's in the corner of your doc. It's probably listed at page, as page like sixty-four. So it's at the tail end of your plan. So again, Nick just excerpted these pieces out so that we could then just focus on these things. What you're looking at are the goal statements. Goals are, are just like what you probably know all too well, and that they're very broad statements. Again, they should be achievable or attainable. And so nevertheless, they're not very detailed. They're usually fairly general. They're optimistic. They're forward-looking. And again, we're asking you to kind of project as best you can out, you know, ten years, fifteen years, twenty years as was done with the current plan when, when we looked out, as it turned out to be about twenty years. So what, what these say, what they do, what goals do is they really provide direction. And they're intended to tell the community as well as to be used in, in your activities, what the community would like to see in terms of development. So in the end, when you approve things or when you deny things, are you doing it under the guise of these goal statements is really what we're hoping to get answered. The first one is, is fairly common. That's language that shows up that really most community efforts are, in fact, to protect public health, welfare, and safety. Believe it or not, in the state of Iowa, there's another phrase on the tail end in the Iowa code that says morals. So, you know, I always tease the planning commissions we work with, that part of their job is, is to, to deal with the morality of the community as well, too. So I'm just teasing you. But we always tell people to make sure that they're aware of, of the fact that public health, welfare, and safety is really at the heart of the matter when it comes to planning and zoning activities. And really, a lot of the, the activities that city takes on. So So again, it's a guide. We will hope that the community continues to grow at a moderate rate, that we offer a variety of different housing opportunities. And and what that really is intended to say to you is that the housing, there should be different types of housing, different prices, different ownership models, I guess, different accessibility housing, different locations in the community. That's what we mean by opportunity. So all of those things, again, kind of come to light. Again, continuing what you're doing and and that's making decisions in line with the plan as best you can, maintaining that quality of living. It's something that obviously the task force wants to see, and I'm sure all of you want to see that going forward as well. Quality of life can be one of those terms that are a little difficult to define, but for the most part includes things like it's a safe community, we don't have a lot of traffic, we've got good schools, we've got great parks, we've got, you know, we've got all of these things that are positive. We've got a a great faith-based community. We've got all of those things that really answer that question of why you live here or why you do business here.
I'm this is Sue Flynn, I'm sorry. But how do you? Because I know as school stuff, we make estimates, but as far as the population, what are you basing growth on? You know what, you're saying that there'll be moderate growth, and exactly say that estimated growth. What are you basing growth on? Because if you look at our, you know, population figures, it doesn't lead to showing that much growth.
Right, pretty flat right now in the last couple of decades, Sue, you're right. What we're doing is we will look at historical and then we will look at some population, and we will look at different ranges of historical population. So what I'm saying is we'll go back and look across several decades, eight, ten decades or so. We'll then shorten that up and look at a shorter timeframe, like post-World War II moving forward. And then we'll look probably since like nineteen sixty or seventy, or maybe even shorter than that. So we'll come up with a whole series of projections of population. And what we'll do then is we'll end up with a range. And as you might imagine, if you go out that many decades, Waterloo grew dramatically, especially in the forties and the fifties and the sixties. And so that would skew those numbers. So what we do is we pick different timeframe ranges when we do those. And we do two different types of projections. We do a linear, which is just a straight line across those those timeframes. And then we also do geometric, which is just a percent change. And so we'll end up doing a whole bunch of different projections. And then we'll come back and and talk to you about it. They will show up in the document. There'll be a section that'll that'll contain then some of those population projections. So you'll see a range, Sue.
Thank you.
Yeah, right now, you're you're absolutely right. Our our MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, just did a bunch of population projections here not too long ago as they were updating a five-year plan, which included Waterloo. So they did projections for each jurisdictions in the metro. And Waterloo's growth was was very much a a level line in terms of growth, looking just at the last couple of decades and using those as an indicator. We're going to look at at multiple ranges, but again, you're you're absolutely right. The numbers have been, the numbers have been pretty much on a par. So right now, again, if you look at the projections, you'll see that the population figure, the guesstimate that comes out is probably about sixty-five thousand somewhere in that neighborhood. All right, so again, as we kind of look through these things, this list, as you look through it, shouldn't be anything hopefully out of line or shouldn't be anything that draws ire from anybody. This is really our wish list or our hope list. We want to make sure that the services that are provided are not only adequate, but also are there in a timely manner, that we provide, you know, diversity of other activities, rather than just residential and commercial and living in the community and working in the community, but parks and golf courses and and the trails and and those other kinds of things. So that, again, touch on quality of life or quality of living. Our economic development approach, we talked about clean, non-polluting businesses and those kinds of things. And for the most part, since this last plan was done, the community, the the jobs, the businesses that have been attracted largely probably in existing businesses as opposed to attracted businesses have all been in industries that have been, for the most part, non-polluting types of businesses. So again, looking at that central business district, we don't want to lose sight of that. Again, there have been great strides made downtown here. Our office is right downtown, so we can, we kind of are in the forest through the trees, so to speak, so we can see things happening here. There have been great strides downtown and want to see that continue on. Again, we want to conserve energy resources whenever, however, we can. And then the environmentally sensitive areas, again, looking at your staff reports, the one that always sticks out is the floodplain. On your staff reports, there's always conversation about the the property, if it's in the floodplain, if it's not in the floodplain. You get pictures of aerial photos, so you can see if there's a wooded area, those kinds of things. So you're going to get exposure to the various environmental factors. Again, that may be impacted by development that lands on your desk in protecting and preserving cultural and scenic, I'm sorry, recreational opportunities in the community, working collaboratively, and then making sure that we're always being inclusive with public input. There are many things that require the Planning and Zoning Commission to obtain public input. We want to make sure that continues. We want to make sure it's enhanced. Doing this here, you know, we weren't talking about Zoom in two thousand and three when we were doing your plan. We weren't talking about Zoom. We all probably didn't have a cellphone in our pocket or in front of us in two thousand and three. But those are all different means and methods of communicating with the public. And so we want to make sure that if there's an opportunity to use those or use the technology accordingly, that that we do that, so long as it's positive, obviously, and that it's helpful for you as a commission. Again, we always want to make sure that we're doing things deliberately transparent, open, all of those terms. Beyond that, the other two goals, I had just made some notes or a couple of other things. Again, at the bottom, going back to the comments we got out of the task force. Again, climate change, don't know if we want to enter something in there about climate change there, if we want to wait for that to be part of of the policy statements and working then with the UNI class. So there's UNI class that is very involved in Professor Eric Giddens, I think is joining us today, is working with the the students and and has been working with the city to some degree. Also, the University of Iowa has a sustainability area or department, and they are doing a number of things, I think some eighteen projects with the city. So all of which have probably ramifications on energy efficiency, overall efficiencies, economic efficiencies and probably climate change. Eric, a comment?
Yeah, this is Eric Do Not again. I have a question about. Well, let me start with the one that I know I know I. Let me start with the question I know I want to phrase correctly. So where is the setting where we have to have, where's the setting where we want to have the conversation about increasing the population? Because you said that the guesstimated population would be sixty-five thousand residents at some point. And I just wanted to know, where does the city want to have that conversation? What setting should we be having the conversation where we want to reach out to people and have have them look at the city of Waterloo as a place they want to live in instead of having the population reduced for whatever reason? That it's reducing naturally, I guess, or for a specific reason? Where where should we be having that conversation? Because I have a feeling that it's not here.
Well, actually, one of that, you know, I made the comment a little earlier, too, about the community and and marketing efforts and image in protection and image, those kinds of of things, those kinds of efforts. Again, I think those things are moving. I think we want to continue doing that. And we don't want to stop, obviously, and we want to enhance that whenever we get the chance. But certainly, the way that the community will attract residents, Eric, you know, there are a number of different ways, whether it's job generation or whatever it is, development. But also then the reputation, the image of the community, those kinds of things are very important. And so perhaps there should be a goal in there that talks about marketing of the of the community and imaging of the community. I I think that would be appropriate. Again, it's not really a land use conversation for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yeah.
Maybe more of a city council conversation and maybe more so for their strategic plan. As they work on imaging of the community, it's not going to hurt that it's here, but at the same time, it may be more appropriately addressed at that level. And in that in that way, through their strategic plan, through their budgeting. They've got a staff, the the mayor as a or the city as a staff person that actually works on marketing efforts in the community. And Wendy Bowman is is the name. And so certainly that would be something that we could wrap into this to a degree as well, too.
And I I did have the other question, Brian. This is Eric again. The other question that I had about the various housing opportunities, we did have on the Waterloo Housing Trust run, a member always talk about we needed to increase housing for people with disabilities that was also disabilities accessible and also cost friendly or affordable cost. And that housing stock needed to be increased. So I just wanted to put that on the table.
The only other comment I had at the bottom again was just talking about healthy or active lifestyles. Again, you could, we could tie that to the recreational stuff if we needed to, or we could tie it somewhere else. Got wonderful facilities in the community, parks, certainly the sportsplex, young arena, we've got just so many amenities in the community that lend it lend it themselves to us in terms of of active lifestyle. And so again, that's that's becoming very popular in communities. It's also one of the attractors. When you live in a community that's tied together by excellent transportation infrastructure, it makes it easy to commute and move around. And one of the attractions of the community is having those quality of life amenities. That will also help you bring people to the community. Eric, I know you were asking that question before, how you affect the population. Having excellent schools, having, school buildings are all in tremendous shape. That local option sales tax has done wonders. You know, having the parks, having the sportsplex, having all of those kinds of things, just letting them have an active lifestyle.
This is Virginia. I would be interested in, because I was looking for resources, like in terms of Iowa City, in terms of their climate change action plan. I would be interested in hearing if Professor Giddens, Senator Giddens, has some comments or feedback, because I personally would like to see, and I know that is one of your your bullet points, Brian, in terms of climate change.
Sure, I'm happy to share a little bit with you, Virginia. Appreciate the question. And I I just want to make a correction upfront that I'm not actually a professor. I I'm a program manager at the Center for Energy and Environmental Education. So faculty can get pretty territorial about that that title. And so just wanted to be clear on that. But I I have had conversations with with Brian and with city planning staff in the past about how we may be, our center may be able to to work alongside this planning process, this comprehensive planning process, to develop what, you know, would be analogous, I guess, to a climate action plan that some cities have done as a standalone product and effort, you know, like Iowa City, Dubuque has one. We're actually working on a resilience plan in Cedar Falls right now. There are other examples around the state. Des Moines is working on something right now. But we thought that it it might make sense, because you're having to update this comprehensive plan right now. And and a lot of the elements in the comprehensive plan are going to have some sort of climate impact, you know, associated with them, that what we could do is is, you know, once you've decided on what's going to go into the comprehensive plan, pick out the elements of the plan that will have a a positive climate impact, that will have some sort of impact on reducing greenhouse gas emissions out into the future. And then we can model what the impact will be, essentially. So the way I would envision it is that you'd have kind of an addendum or some sort of supporting document that will, you know, go along with this comprehensive plan that would, again, be sort of like what a standalone climate action plan would be that that other cities have done. And the hope there is that it would avoid duplication of effort in some ways. You've got a pretty robust process going on right now to update this comp plan. Let's use a lot of that work and and not go through all of that again, like the public participation pieces and all of that, and just extract the 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 climate-related elements and and turn that into a supportive addendum. Does that make sense? Do you have any other questions?
Do you allow public input on the climate change studies that you're doing?
Well, I think the idea here was that you're doing a public engagement process for this comp plan. So all we would be doing is taking the elements that that are, you know, that are included in the comprehensive plan update that will have some sort of impact on reducing greenhouse gas emissions out into the future. Like, you know, if you, there was a section in there about clean energy, that kind of thing. We we could take that, you know, that one piece and we can model it to to say, okay, over the next decade or twenty years or thirty years, what's the impact of that sort of policy on reducing emissions in the city of Waterloo? So you will have already done the public engagement, the public input through your comp plan process. And then we'd just be modeling those elements for their impact on on climate.
Right, I'm just kind of specifically wanted direction as far as what your involvement would be with it, because I question too, as far as where the comp plan is for quality of life of people in the city of Waterloo. And like we previously, a few months ago, approved solar panels and solar Mid-American project. And, you know, we don't have statistics from that, like thirty years down the road, when that that bank and that system is no longer feasible and usable for Mid-American. You know, that creates an eyesore in the community, too, and it's not used. And so I I sometimes question, we don't have studies, you know, obviously, that can go ahead, because if that sits in that area and becomes an eyesore, that could become an area for vandalism and would not create quality of life. if that sits in that area and becomes an eyesore, that could become an area for vandalism and would not create quality of life sort of community.
Yeah, I, you know, that I think that sort of thing would be outside of the scope of what we're talking about um, here. Uh, that that approval process went through your board of adjustment. Um, and uh, you know, that's that's just a different thing than what we're talking about doing here.
Uh, this is Cody. Um, I just wanted to say I agree with the concept of putting climate change uh, plans into uh, an addendum because it's such a an issue of right now that we definitely have a lot of things to tackle ahead of us. But if if we think that the life of this plan will be 20 years, uh, things that we're doing now that that are seemingly big to tackle climate change might be just the normal way of life when we go to make a new plan in two decades.
Thank you, Cody.
Any other, go ahead. No, no, I was just gonna say, any other questions or um, comments on that in particular?
Brian, did I I did I characterize everything we kind of talked about correctly as far as your your memory goes?
Yeah, yeah, no, I actually uh, um, Nick in our office who's on the the uh, session here too, we've had him working through some of the uh, American Planning Association materials on climate change. Um, addendums to plans, those kinds of things uh, that are at a national level that uh, associations, again, national level hand hands down to the state level. And then uh, we at the local level pick up and there's there's definitely some consistency there, Eric. So um, didn't mean to call you a professor. I gave you a promotion, but I can always like, I can call you a senator though, so.
Yeah, that one I'm not totally comfortable with yet, but I guess I it's that one, that was at least correct.
Okay, so the the last section that I really want.
I'm comfortable with it.
Um, the last section that uh, really want wanted to take a look at today was the policy statements. And um, so if you drill down, that's really what you're looking at. The uh, the goal is very general. Don't don't give you a lot of detail about how you do something or when you do it. And so uh, the the policies then are intended to drill down a little bit further. Uh, the line is always making sure that we don't cross into the regulation or the regulatory world. That's your zoning ordinance and your subdivision ordinance and all those other tools. So um, again, what we're trying to do is just put a little bit more information into the policy statements um, that then are consistent with the goals so that staff and you as a commission moving forward um, that you can go ahead and make sure that uh, the actions that you take are consistent with the plan, which is really ultimately what what we're looking for is is that there's consistency with the plan, that you're using it as a guide. And so as you look through these statements, again, there shouldn't be anything in here that should be probably too offending or or give you too much heartburn in terms of as you read them. Um, but there definitely are a number of areas that we need to make sure that we're updating uh, as we move forward because there have been a number of things that have changed uh, since we put this plan together. Um, chief among those is you've got a new zoning ordinance. You've uh, been working on a number of urban renewal plans, uh, which is the tax increment finance tool that the city uses. And so we've got to make mention of of a number of those efforts. And so as you look at those things, um, we want to make sure that we get those updated throughout. We want to make sure that as you kind of look through the list that uh, number seven, that the planning commission is getting the appropriate information from staff. Um, that in fact, that we look at a number of different things. Um, one of the new things is you look at policy number seven that I had made a note on was um, you have a complete streets committee. The city has a complete streets committee. Um, looks at a number of different factors. You've probably seen reference to that. Both John and Eric are involved in that process on your staff. Um, as am I and and one of our other staff members. And we need to make mention of the fact that that group brings information to you. Um, we focus on really the property line to the property line is kind of our our uh, our our territory. Uh, we provide information then to uh, both Noel and Jamie uh, in engineering and in the planning departments. Um, we're appointed by city council and we provide recommendations then on things like sidewalk links and interconnectivity as streets are redeveloped and rebuilt. Uh, making sure that those those alternate forms or modes of transportation are not forgotten. That the trails are connected, that the sidewalks are connected, that uh, uh, those kinds of things happen. And so um, our committee has been involved in uh, a number of things uh, in terms of corridors. Uh, University Avenue corridor, if you haven't driven that, I would invite you to do that now that you can get all the way from one end to the other. Um, you'll see that those improvements, uh, you'll see likewise on 63 as it as it goes from downtown uh, past Allen Hospital on the north end in terms of that growth and development. Again, sidewalks, uh, intermodal connectivity. Um, likewise, uh, we we uh, got in just at the tail end on the Kimball Avenue uh, project as well too, but we try to get involved in terms of of those alternate forms of transportation, making sure that uh, in fact, that all the modes are considered to some degree as best we can. And of course, that's always within budgetary constraints, right? We've always got a money conversation that we have to have. So, um, that being said, we want to make sure that we get mention, make mention of that. We always want to make sure that, you know, we're we're hitting all of the policy statements. Again, we've talked about these in the goals that, you know, openness, predictability, that things are done deliberately um, in terms of the process. Again, the outcome may not be always exactly what I like as the applicant or or whatnot, but certainly we want to make sure that the process is is followed consistently. So um, and that we're as transparent as possible. Again, as you look at these policies, um, you know, would invite you uh, to to look at them more in detail and then just shoot any comments that you would make uh, through your staff. Again, we want to make mention about collaboration and and those kinds of things, community character. Um, we want to make sure that uh, there's a whole section dealing with the zoning, the subdivision ordinance. Your zoning ordinance was redone um, during the life of this plan as well. Um, and so uh, we think that's in pretty good shape, but we've heard uh, some discussion and in our complete streets committee uh, call for updating of the subdivision ordinance. And that the city get their subdivision ordinance updated because that would be a tool that would help our committee moving forward um, with regard to requiring sidewalks and and those other kinds of amenities in the community as well. So um, we want to make sure that 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 gets written in there as well, that uh, that effort be undertaken by the city during the life of this plan too. So, um, again, you can kind of walk through these. I'm not going to walk you through them. We just want to make sure that some of those comments that were made before get brought forward. Uh, active lifestyles, the climate change stuff, the projects that have been done, the plans that the city is working on now, um, all get carried forward. Again, um, there have been a number of plans that are being worked on again, uh, not only um, as project manager Giddens talked about the climate change, uh, but also certainly the University of Iowa uh, has some 18 projects, I think, listed on the city's website that they are working on, some of which are very narrow and focused. They're not maybe citywide. Uh, they're focused on just a particular task or just a particular item. And so um, all very helpful to the community, but those efforts are going on as well too. And and our complete streets committee had a presentation um, by University of Iowa staff, and they kind of walked us through what those projects are and what what's going on with them. So they arranged from housing to what I would call engineering type projects to what we might label as school of law kinds of projects. So uh, those with legal ramifications. And so it's really just a chance for the city to uh, take advantage of of an opportunity at the university uh, to get research, to get guidance um, from folks who are working on it on a daily basis. So just you get the opportunity to go on the city website. I would do that. I would encourage that. Um, again, we want to make sure that we get mentioned in these tools. Um, you've got the Cura was mentioned. You now have a CLURA, um, which is a similar type of program. Uh, just a lot of things happened in the 20 years, and we want to make sure that these policy statements get uh, brought up to date. And so if you think of anything or see anything, um, certainly let us know. Uh, we know the community continues to move forward with its brownfields projects. Um, we just reviewed proposals for a consultant to continue on with the brownfields work in the community. Um, and so just just those reclamation type projects are important as well, too. So uh, again, different type of reclamation typically, uh, one that's related to chemicals. Uh, certainly, um, the commissioner that brought up the the comment about um, the solar panels and the end of life. Uh, the decommissioning uh, in a lot of communities, whether they be city or county, our organization uh, has been part of conversations as we talk about decommissioning of wind generators, wind towers, solar is probably going to be the next conversation, but not only uh, safe installation uh, without hopefully destroying roads and those kinds of things, but also then decommissioning. Who's responsible to make sure that uh, when it's time, when the useful life is um, or that they're being replaced with something new, something better, that in fact, there's a plan in place. Um, we do the same types of things uh, in communities when we talk about quarries. You know, reclamation of land after the quarrying activity occurs, um, making sure there's a plan in place. So, um, again, I made just a few notes on the back end based on the conversations that we had with the task force. Um, certainly sharing and and regionalism would be something that maybe we want to talk about as a policy. Um, we we probably want to talk about climate change, alternative forms of energy. Um, these are all written down. It's like you guys were reading them off my notes uh, in the conversation ahead of time, which is terrific. Um, the the multimodal nature of transportation. We want to talk about all the forms and all the modes of transportation. Um, infrastructure investment, that's huge. Um, you know, if you want to, if you want to get frightened, I'll send you over that regional wastewater treatment uh, budget that uh, we first got a look at, and it was very much very big numbers. You know, we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars if you wanted a regionalized wastewater. And you talk about um, a lot of money. Those kinds of projects are are huge. So um, again, the cost of those things and paying for them is always going to be a challenge. We want to talk about active lifestyles and healthy living. Um, do we want to talk, Virginia, I think at the last meeting you had brought up um, the impacts of pan, the pandemic. Um, you know, I I I still think that we're just on the edge of it. I think we probably are going to see those impacts as those types of programs that prevent rent evictions, foreclosures, all of those kinds of things start to to wane um, or to move along that um, we're going to see some of those things. Um, you know, I was just in a meeting in front of this where we were talking about, you know, what does commercial real estate look like as an endeavor? You know, now that people can work from home and they've made it, you know, we've proven it now, right? That a lot of folks can work from home. Uh, what does that do for commer- commercial real estate? What does it do for office buildings? What does it do for the internet service that we've got? We should certainly talk about broadband. We know the city of Waterloo is is working on a a commission for looking at um, internet service provider and and or being one. And so there's been some study, haven't seen it publicly, uh, but there is a communications commission that we saw that there were some appointments made. Um, and so it's something that we should make sure that we include in this conversation as well, too. Anything else that strikes you as we we've got to make sure that we pull it in?
Uh, this is Virginia. I think maybe Cody mentioned this at the last meeting, but in terms of when we talk about a business district, um, at least a lot on this meeting, we were talking about downtown. But I also think it is important to um, remember the Crossroads District at this point and just of how our city has kind of grown and changed over the years and making sure that the structures and um, uh, property out at in Crossroads, you know, that's considered in part of a a district as well and making sure that we continue to grow that area that's that's currently in existence. I don't know, Cody, was that was that, are you, if you're still on the call?
Yeah, I was just, I was just getting the phone to unmute and you got on and said that. And I I think it it's important to not mention just the Crossroads District, but to uh, continue to utilize all commercial buildings uh, as a form of infilling. So that way we we keep uh, keep as much of our property on the tax rolls without uh, having to create more resources and infrastructure at a an increased cost to the city.
Yeah, I I think that's, those would be good. I'm making some notes here too that in addition, we talked about downtown and crossroads, but certainly the industrial investment that's been made out at Midport in and around the airport. Um, the highway 63 going south primarily and a south of university, there've been a lot of of development there. There's certainly been a lot of development along San Marnon uh, between 63 and really 380 or 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 27 or what number you know it as or 218, um, La Porte Road, you know, the the east-west road there. Um, certainly Logan Plaza area in northbound. That has all been dramatically redevelopment. I'm still referring to it as Logan Plaza. I probably shouldn't. Um, but uh, that's kind of how I identify the area in my mind. Um, but that has all been redeveloped as well, too. Um, of course, we know the industrial park to the east, Martin Luther King um, Drive and and uh, out by uh, uh, certainly out by John Deere and Tyson and and all of those um, uh, more heavy industries out that direction too. So, um, and certainly there was uh, some initial study going on about the kind of the east side, that northeast bypass. You know, we can't lose sight of that either, even though it's really just in concept right now. Um, there's no alignments, there's no anything like that. It's just kind of in its infancy in terms of study. And so um, that would be another area that we should probably talk about.
Um, Brian, this is Eric. Um, I wanted to ask about community or uh, community entertainment or public leisure facilities. So I'm talking about like public pools, public public entertainment use facilities. Um, because I I'm just remembering when um, Virginia and I were in school, our generation of students and kids would go to the mall and um, enjoy ourselves as, enjoy ourselves as that age at the mall and other places like that. So where where um, where are the places where this generation is entertaining itself? And do we need to build some of those or consider some of those public leisure or public community entertainment um, facilities to provide for this generation? I know it's a weird question, um, but I just wanted to put that on out of the table.
Yeah, it's it's the generational thing. I don't even know what we're up to anymore. Now, what do we have to Generation Z?
Z, yeah, yup.
No, um, certainly, you know, it it uh, I think the headline of one of the articles I saw just the other day was how the millennials were putting the Generation Zs to shame on something. And it was like, okay, I've lost track of how many generations there are, I guess, anymore. So um, but it's not an inappropriate question, Eric. I mean, I think it's something that um, you know, what's it going to look like? Um, you know, we we talk about cell phones when uh, I started working here, you know, cell phones. Uh, I started working here, you know, cell phones, cell towers were not really. A thing, you know, um, and then as cell phones came into being. Uh, the cell towers kind of became the scourge, right? Everybody didn't like the cell towers and. So people tried to disguise them and hide them and. And you see them as a flagpole on one end of the community and you see it as a crucifix on the other end of the community. And so um, people tried to disguise them, well. Now what, right? We can't really criticize the cell towers because we all are carrying one in our pocket. And so um, you know, we've kind of created the monster a little bit and so what's going to be? The next thing, you know, in terms of whether it be communication or, or whether it be meetings or whatnot, we. Had a little bit of this conversation in a earlier meeting today about. Um, we were debating the future of Zoom and whether or not, you know, we had people that said, well, the in-person meeting is done, you know, that. We're not going to have in-person meetings, that they're done. And one person about climbed out of their seat and said, oh no. No, 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 as soon as I can turn off Zoom, I'm going to turn off Zoom and we're going to go back to in-person meetings, so.
Me too.
What's the next thing? I, uh, I think, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Steve, um. You know, one of the things that's hard to predict, looks like you talked about earlier, in two thousand and three, we didn't have cell phones, we didn't have some of the things that we have now and, and we did this plan twenty years ago. Couldn't anticipate some of those things, just like right now, things, if anything is true, things always change, but they're always changing faster, it seems like. And um, if anything, you know, the Amazons of the world and the COVID nineteen telecommuting experience. Um, it's going to be interesting to see what happens with, with planning of communities. And what's going to happen with some of those large retail structures, some of these office spaces. And it's something that is going to require keeping constant tabs on and what's going to happen here in the next. Five years, next ten years, where that's going and considering. In a planning purpose, strategy, how you convert and how, what, what facilities are existing are going to be adaptable for what use? And how are they going to be used? What's, what's going to happen with those? I know that always happens. But I think it's becoming more evident now with, with this COVID nineteen experiment, experiment that we had.
That tail end of what uh, Commissioner Tross was talking about, I guess, was the other half of my question. Uh, there of my question.
Yeah, it, it, it's going to be interesting, I mean, you can. The experiment, that's a, well, that's a well-put Steve is to talk about it being, you know, because it really is kind of a bit of a laboratory, no pun intended. You know, we, we talked about our, our organization, we own a building in downtown Waterloo, we're. Uh, right next to what the waterworks and just to the south of the Y and we own the building and. You know, we were talking about, do we even need the building? You know, you got a laptop and then you wifi at home and. Now centralized filing and government work is always, I think, going to require paper to some degree, so. Um, you know, from that standpoint, but do you need the same amount of space? Do you need a three-story building? Or is it just a floor now? You know, um, so I, I, I think you're right, I think. Adaptive reuse of commercial facilities, I think just the change in, in the way commerce is going to be. Um, you know, there were many people that probably never used Amazon or ordered from target dot com. Uh, or ordered their groceries from Hy-Vee before this. Who now have just realized, that's pretty handy and so, um. I, I think some changes, I think, you know, we'll backslide some certainly, but um. It'll be interesting to see which ones stick. Other questions or comments? I'm just kind of making notes on my, on my copy here. Is there anything else that you would have for me? Your next assignment, which we'll call it Virginia, your next assignment will be. Um, we're actually gonna send out then, again, an excerpt out of your existing plan, we're going to send you. Some of the land use maps, so we'll get those organized. Um, we'll get those to your staff and they can get them out to you, but if you're wanting a sneak peek. You know, look at the tail end of, of your plan, go back and look at uh, the way that um. The tiered growth, the areas were kind of cut apart. Uh, some of those have developed since the last plan and so we may have to subdivide those areas a little bit. But look at your future land use map. And look at then how your future land use map marries up to the other jurisdictions that are around you. There are about three maps that I just mentioned, if you want to take a look at them, look at those maps, look at. Um, how you grow, look at your future land use map and look at then the edges. Because that future land use map is what you see in, again, your staff reports. That's what your staff is referring to, uh, they're looking at these policy statements, they're looking at the goals. And they're looking at the land use map and that's how they're telling you, that's what they're using as their source. For consistency um, in the plan. So that when they give you information, those are the things they're looking at, so. We'll spend the next meeting then looking at the maps. Does that make sense? And then we'll go back to working on these, updating them. And if you think of anything in the meantime, by all means, pass them through your staff, get them to us. And we'll get it integrated then, again, I keep going back to what did the task force tell us, so. I had the task force stuff in front of me at the same time I was reading these. And saying, oh, they did tell us to do this or they didn't tell us to do that. So I just did a lot of my notes, mine are all full of chicken scratch. Um, and so uh, based on what the task force has given us some direction to do and that's really what I spoke from today.
Brian, if you're looking at, I don't know if you have the whole plan in front of you. Um, I just tried to glance real quickly, is that the maps you were talking about, are those on pages seventy-three, seventy-nine and eighty-three then? The growth map?
I can take a quick look for you.
The growth map, the uh, future land use and then. The future land use areas immediately adjacent. Are those the three we're talking about? Okay.
Yep, those would be the ones we want you to take a look at, those are the ones that we use most often.
Virginia, say that again, seventy, seventy-three, seventy-nine, eighty-three?
Yeah, I'll email it to you too.
And we'll clip them out again and get them emailed, so. We'll just clip them out of the plan and send them to you through your staff.
Sounds good, thank you.
Don't have to dig them all out on your own.
Thank you.
And that's all I have unless you have anything else for me.
Any other questions or comments or feedback? Okay, well, thank you, Brian and Nick, we really appreciate all the work put into it. Um, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank, okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Hey.
Hi.
Thank you, everyone, we'll see you next.